Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the whole for Monday, August 12th, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting. We are on Zoom as well as in person. So please note through August 19th, the main entrance of the municipal building will be closed due to renovations. During this time, the municipal building will be open to the public by appointment only. We ask that residents attend meeting via Zoom and for full details, visit cityofgroton.com. Also a reminder, we have primary voting tomorrow.
Recording in progress.
We have primary voting tomorrow and we have signage to get you to primary voting. It's in the back of the building. We have designated spots for people who would like to come and vote and there'll be signage to get you into the auditorium so that you can vote. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Tally, Counselor Patterson, and Counselor Piazza are present.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. So new business, fire department donation acceptance, chief. We'll need to get, okay, thank you.
Good evening. I think in your packets, you have the proposed resolution for next week and then a letter from the foundation. We just applied for a grant. They do small grants and we received a $500 grant to purchase new camera for the Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay. Questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, chief.
All right.
All right, Parks and Rec tree maintenance in Washington Park. Mary?
Good morning, ma- good morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Where am I at? So I'm here tonight. We had, we had budgeted last year for tree maintenance in Washington Park. I worked with the tree warden to identify seven trees that are going to be completely removed and we have 17 trees that we're going to prune back, dead wood, make sure that they're safe for, for people to use the park safely. We took it out to bid. We put it on the website. We put it out on the state portal and then we had a mandatory walkthrough where four companies came through. So we worked with those four companies to get their bids and where our recommendation is to go with Northeastern Tree Services out of Cranston, Rhode Island. They'll do the initial, this is going to kind of be some phases because we, this is only half the park. It's like the west side of the park. We haven't done, we haven't looked at anything on the eastern, eastern side of the park yet. So we just wanted to get an idea where we're going to be with phases. So this is our first phase.
Okay. Questions or comments on this resolution? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Were there, so we have the bid for Northeastern, for the one that you're recommending. Were there any significant differences in the, right, we have the numbers but not the specifics of the other ones, but were there any specific differences because the cost range is
Very different, yes.
Very different for the different services? Is it just, you know?
It's just those companies, yeah. So they are, they were all given the same information in the, in the bid packet. We, I don't know if that was a part of yours. They did it by tree and, and so everybody did the same way, got the same packet. It was the very, I mean, our highest one is $41,000 for, you know, our lowest one is 12, so.
You also had a walkthrough, right?
We had a walkthrough, yep. And so they were, they were all, showed the trees that have to, where they have to be and where they have to get to and everything else, so.
So is a level playing, to answer your question another way, is a level playing field for everybody because in order to bid, you had to be at the pre-walter?
Right.
Mandatory.
Well, I mean, it doesn't seem, I was just asking because it doesn't seem like there's much wiggle room on the work product, but the price range is
Mm-hmm.
A lot different. I'm sure part of it is equipment that they either have or don't have to do the job.
Equipment, a number of staff members, they might, you know, Northeast, we looked at their website, we kind of vetted some of the ones that came through and it looks like they have quite a different, different crews that do different sections of, like New England. So they obviously have a larger staff than some of the other, other companies that bitted.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Sheffield?
Now, the, I saw the hourly rate for the trimming at $440.
So the hourly rate would be, once they get, so that, that's, that's an adult, so there's no, it's $12,000 and a change for the removal of the seven trees and the pruning and deadwooding of the 17 identified trees. If they're up in their, up in the areas where some of these trees are and see another one that needs to be removed, they'll, they'll, they'll come with us for a change order and that $400 for four hours, 440, they would take that tree down. If it took them eight hours, then it would be 880.
Okay.
So it's just in case, we, you know, once you get up into, up into the thicket, thick of the trees, I mean, some of these trees are right on top of each other in the park. There, we may not, we might have missed something, so we want to be able to have the opportunity to make areas safe as we take other trees down.
Okay, and now that's per tree you're saying?
It's a, it's a four hour timeframe. So for four hours, whatever they can get down in four hours is going to cost us $440.
All right, so that, so they can do a few trees in that period of time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, this is just for, I guess, a question per se. Do we ever have, is the park or any of what we own per se covered underneath insurance? That they would actually cover taking down trees, removing trees at all?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either. I don't think they would for taking down trees. If the trees caused damage, then that's where the insurance would come in.
Yeah, I was just asking because I know I had a tree, when I lived in Virginia, that they were concerned that it may fall in the house. So they did take it down and also ground it out with a stump. So I just didn't know that fell underneath insurance that maybe of the same also, like a preventative measure.
For preventative, no. Is that a dress your question?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
So for preventative maintenance, no. Insurance would not cover.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, okay? Stay there. Boards and Commissions, so we have a youth advisory committee application with Megan Bishop and Meg is online if you have any questions for her. But Mary, go ahead and just talk a little bit to this.
Yes, so Megan reached out to us. She actually, I believe she went to the farmer's market when the youth advisory committee was doing the survey, was hoping to meet with some of the members and they weren't there yet, my members of my committee. So her and I have had a few conversations. She works in our school system right here in, our school here in the City of Groton and she had, you know, she has an interest in being involved in our committee. I shared with her the resolution. She was going to attend our meeting tomorrow that has unfortunately gotten canceled because I had a member resign and my chairman can't come, so I don't have a quorum already, so. But Megan and I have talked and I'm glad to see that she was invited and she's here tonight so she can share with you guys, but she has to offer the committee.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I don't really have any questions necessarily because her, she wrote all her qualifications and gave us her resume. It's pretty clear that she would be a valuable resource to the city. I just want to say I know, you know, people who already have a job working with kids. Sometimes it's a lot to take on more responsibility and, you know, but we run on volunteers, so we can't do it without you. So I just want to say thank you for being willing to volunteer and being willing to be on this committee. So a question for you, Mary, actually, I guess, is, so how many members do we currently have if Megan joins the committee?
Five. She was going to be number six, but I just had one resign that actually was just appointed like three months ago. So I heard her duties as a mother are more important, so she's resigned her position. So this will give us five again. I have reached out, when Megan brought her application in, she talked about another member that she, another resident who's interested, who I actually know, her and her husband. So I've talked to them at depth too. So one of them is going to fill out their application. So we'll get to six. Our goal is seven, so hopefully people, you know, see this meeting and maybe should be interested. We also have, and we had it at City Day, we had a QR code at City Day so people could scan it to get information on our, on the committee, so if they were interested. So hopefully that got some, piques some interest too on City Day.
Nice.
So, yeah, we're trying.
Thank you.
So to, to leverage off what Deputy Mayor said and what Mary said, if you're interested in being on the youth advisory committee, please consider it because we could use volunteers. We need volunteers always. The City of Groton runs on volunteers with boards and commissions and this is a committee that is targeted to help our youth and so that's one of the areas that we do want to put interest in. So if you're interested in joining the youth advisory committee, please give us a call. You can call my office at 860-446-4103 or you can send us an email. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Hi, Megan. Thank you for coming out here to, to serve our community. My question would be, I guess, how long have you lived in the Groton area?
Yes, sure. I have lived in Groton since 2017 this time, so I have a son in the Groton City Schools and I lived in Groton, probably the first time was 2013, took a short break and then I've been back since 2017.
So are you planning on being here, you know, for, you know, a extended period of time or are you?
Yeah, that's my plan. I hope that my son will continue through Groton Schools and I work in the local area too.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other question? Counselor Piazza?
I have no questions, but I just wanted to comment that Miss Meg Bishop and I go back to what for country school days. Excellent to work with her. She's a wonderful person. I'd like to give shout outs to Meg. She's a really wonderful person. She is great with children, great with teens, great with the whole age group period. But I'm so glad you came to us, so I'm glad to see your face and hope to see you again.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. The reappointment to EDC and Malagino, he did not get back in touch with us yet on wanting to continue, so I'm not going to bring that to council tonight. And that takes us to economic development, minor facade grant. So Sierra.
Sorry about that. Okay, good evening, everyone. So I'm happy to bring to you guys another minor facade improvement application. This time is from Riversfront Children's Center. Staff and EDC has done an initial eligibility review. They have met all of our requirements. Their application meets all of our eligibility, their project aligns with our program goals and the EDC recommends funding. So in essence, Children Riverfront replaced the sign on their business, on the facade of their business and so that is what we are looking to reimburse them for and that reimbursement is $2,435. And I believe you guys have in your packet the before and after images of that as well as a copy of the application itself. One thing I would like to note about this application that made it a little bit different from the other ones and just for the viewers is that the sign design was something that was included within this grant as part of the, was included as an eligible expense for the reimbursement.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to make the comment disclosure that I am an employee of Riverfront, so this discussion and the discussion at the meeting that we move it to, I will not be involved in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing that, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Police Department?
Thank you, Sierra.
Mayor? So the first was the purchase of the nine millimeter weapons?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So police department, life expectancy on weaponry and firearms that we carry is approximately 10 years. We're halfway through our life expectancy at this point. What we, what most police departments do then is look for replacement from this point going forward with a vendor that will give us the best resale value for our weapons. In other words, we want somebody that's going to buy back the guns. The reason why we don't wait until the 10-year period is because a lot of the firearms will be worn out at that part, at that point and quite honestly, some of the value would be drastically reduced to the point where we wouldn't get any value. Additionally, the firearms that we first purchased five years ago, while a change from what we did have technologically are now behind. And what I mean by that is they won't carry some of the new additions that are out there. One is a lighting system that's important for the officers if they go to deploy a firearm because it frees up one hand so they can put both hands on the weapon. And the second one, which is the most prolific change, is the holographic sight. So holographic sights are ve- are very new for police. Before that, it was mostly the red dot or laser sight. You might have seen that in the movies. We tend to stay away from that because they can be knocked out of alignment and they're not always true, but the holographic sight is always right on. The weapon system that we currently have, or the pistol that we currently have, doesn't carry a holographic sight. The reason why it's very important for us, obviously this is the extreme use of force if somebody pulls their weapon or officer pulls their weapon and we want them to be as accurate as possible. Well, the holographic sight actually shown nationally that we go from a 70% shooter up to a 90% shooter. So the, the accuracy has increased a lot. So we did do a, a comparison of three vendors. We went with the best price as far as the weapons are concerned. We're looking at $472 per gun with a $235 buyback. Some of the other prices were $579 or 500, actually $580 because it's 99 cents, $580 per weapon with a $250 buyback. So the first one that we selected was the best value, we thought, and that's why we're asking for the appropriation to be approved of $17,000, but, and then we get an $8,000 buyback from that. The remainder, we will not take from the general fund. It will actually come from asset forfeiture, which is a fund that's specially put up based on or created based on court fees that are awarded or surrenders that are awarded to the police department and must be used for law enforcement functions, cannot be used for anything else. So we will take the additional funding from that source and that will complete our purchase as far as firearms.
Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So can you tell us, what are the firearms we have now?
So we have Springfield XD's right now.
What are we buying?
And then we're going to buy Springfield's again because they like that, but the new model is called the Echelon. And like I said, the XD won't take the, the tech that we're looking at, but the Echelon is a brand new design. You know, when we originally bought the XD's, nobody thought that the holographic sights would, would come as quickly as they did, but they are now available for the Echelon, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, purchases sites for the nine millimeters?
Yes, Mayor. So as just previously discussed, again, we're looking for the best site that we can use after having done a product comparison. Again, we picked the three vendors that provide these sites to us and the, in two of the cases, we're going with a, with the same type. It's called a Holosun. Actually, I'm sorry, in all three cases, we're going with a Holosun. So you would think that the pricing would be the same. It's not. There's a, quite a bit of disparity as far as the pricing is concerned. It goes from $9,000 to $11,000 up to $27,000. So we're going to go with the second one, which is the 9500 and that will equip our weapons with, with this red dot sight or this, I'm sorry, not a red dot, holographic sight.
Okay, questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Chief, is there a difference in capability based on the prices or is that across the board for the same product?
It's for the same product. There are different products out there, but the, we have to look at the cost analysis and the benefit, right? We can go with Aimpoint as one, which is another alternative type vendor, but the, it's exponentially more expensive. The Holosun is robust. It's used anyway amongst police departments across the country. I myself carry a Holosun. It's proven itself and there's no reason to go to the next level or even EOTech, which is, is a level beyond that, so. All those, those vendors would probably argue about which one is better, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting of August 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, the INSEP budget?
The INSEP is the Nuclear Security Grant. This is an annual grant that the police department is, or can apply for. We did look at what we wanted to put it into for this year with the eye towards EOC security. So EOC is our Emergency Operating Center when we're standing up here with a full staff. We looked at the existing camera software and capability. It is, some of it is analog. It's getting older. We're going to swap over to a digital, but the most important thing, and this will come up later on, is that we have a server right now that is failing us as far as cameras are concerned. So the INSEP is an emergency purchase for us because it will solve our server problem as well as then later on, we'll change out the cameras to, to the newer models.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the special Mayor and Council meeting of August 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries. And then the INSEP grant for the interior cameras?
Right, so I'm sorry, so what I should have told you is that we needed to accept it first, so the first is to accept it, but that's what the application will be, is the application of the INSEP grant will be for the inside security cameras and the server.
Okay. Questions or comments on that resolution? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the special Mayor and Council meeting of August 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Motion carries. All right, I will take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant, excuse me, pursuant to connect a general statute 1-206 Alpha personnel police department to include the Mayor and Council, Chief, Captain Lido, Corporal Chin, and Officer Precourt.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so we will go into executive session. We do not have any action coming out of this. We'll then go into adjourn, we'll adjourn and then we'll immediately go into the special Mayor and Council meeting.
Recording stopped.
Go find some personnel. Go find some personnel.
Ready? Okay, we are back in session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Okay, do we? Do we have everybody? I understand, but so we have all the guests. I want to make sure that we have the guests, we have the officers, we know that. Okay? Let me know when you're ready. Ready? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the special mayor and council meeting, the City of Groton Special Mayor and Council Meeting for Monday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Roll call.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor O'Tally, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Patterson are present.
Okay, we have new business. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Resolution R dash twenty-four dash eight dash one nineteen. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor appoint and the city council approve the promotion of Corporal Chin to the rank of sergeant in the City of Groton Police Department effective August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Iso move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Chief, I'll let you introduce the candidate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So for tonight's consideration, I have two promotions. The first one is Corporal Alan Chin. He's been a veteran officer here with the Groton City Police Department, has done stellar work as a frontline supervisor. Our front, our beginning rank in that is the corporal rank. He's shown that he is competent in that. He underwent a, underwent a testing process with the law enforcement council. He came out as one of the top two candidates in that. And as such, he is very much a credible candidate for the promotion to sergeant.
Hold on, we're shifting. Okay, good, we have the camera shifted. I've had difficulty in the past shifting. Okay, with that, I'll open the floor to mayor and council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Not going to repeat everything I said in the executive session, but I will say, as I always do, you know, thank you so much for serving the community for so long. I know that lots of departments are hurting for officers and, you know, we have had the opportunity to get some really good ones. So I appreciate all of you guys also standing here. And I just want to also thank, we have some members of our chaplain team here, and I want to thank you guys for supporting our police department too, because I think that's pretty rare that we have so many community members supporting our police department. And, you know, from the rest of the community, it's really appreciated, and we appreciate your service, and thank you for being willing to serve in leadership because that is also not an easy role, to take extra responsibility among your peers to help our community thrive. So thank you.
Other counselors? Counselor Sheffield?
Again, Corporal Chin, congratulations again, and again, best, best of luck with being sergeant, and I know you'll be, you'll be, you'll do great for us. So again, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to repeat again with the family and friends there that congratulations to Corporal promoting to Sergeant Chin. And I just wanted to let them know that even citizens have commented. I actually looked at somebody where he was on a call, they just talked about professionalism, how well he handled the call, and how he just helped the whole situation. So it's kudos to the police department and also to him, and congratulations again.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, before we do the swearing in, let's take a, let's take a vote. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, now we can, city clerk, we can swear in Sergeant Chin.
Do you, Alan Chin, solemnly swear or affirm to faithfully support and defend the Constitution of the United States and Connecticut state law, to discharge the duties of sergeant for the City of Groton Police Department in accordance with the rules of the city, to faithfully serve its citizens and visitors with honor and integrity, to promote and maintain the public trust and adhere to the department's code of ethics? Do you assume these obligations freely, voluntarily, and without reservation?
I do.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
So we have a tradition in the police department, we call it pinning, so I'm going to ask you for your old badge there, Alan. And this is his corporal badge, which will go into storage for right now. I'm going to present you with the new sergeant badge, but I'm not going to give it to you. I'm going to give it to whoever's going to pin you. Who's going to pin you tonight? My husband. It's okay if you stick them, that's fine. Yeah, you're good. All right, cool. Not very photogenic. Okay, good.
Okay, all right. Counselor O'Tally, resolution twenty-four eight one twenty.
R dash twenty-four dash eight dash one twenty. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the promotion of police officer John Philip Precourt to the rank of corporal in the City of Groton Police Department effective August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Iso move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we're looking at one of our officers that's a credit to the department. Officer Precourt not only does his patrol functions very well, but he has also taken on the additional responsibilities of some of our specialty teams, including SRT, which is a special response, and the dive team. Both of those require a lot of additional work. JP does that with any, without any complaints and has proven himself to be a competent officer. Again, came out as one of the top tiers in the LEC process, in the testing process. So it's my pleasure to recommend that JP receive the promotion to corporal.
Thank you. Open the floor to, for discussion, mayor and council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you again for your service, and, you know, I, it's always nice to see all the support of people who come to support the officers on a, on a Monday night. It's not the most convenient time. So, you know, we, we, the mayor and council and the community really appreciate you supporting the officers who support our community, so thank you.
Counselor Sheffield?
Congratulations once again, and, you know, best of luck with your, with the promotion. And like I said, hopefully you keep going with us in the city. Thank you.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, just wanted to congratulate Officer Precourt, and in front of his family, to say that I did meet him personally at the Billmore Library to chat with the officers and have a very extensive conversation with him, very pleasant. You can tell with his soul that this is the job that he wants to do, and he's very proud of his family. We talked about his family too, and he's very proud of them. And glad to have him on board, and congratulations again, your promotion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, opposed, abstention, motion carries. And now we can do the swearing in.
Do you, Jean-Philip Precourt, solemnly swear or affirm to faithfully support and defend the Constitution of the United States and Connecticut state law, to discharge the duties of corporal for the City of Groton Police Department in accordance with the rules of the city, to faithfully serve its citizens and visitors with honor and integrity, to promote and maintain the public trust and adhere to the department's code of ethics? Do you assume these obligations freely, voluntarily, and without reservation?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take his officer badge and present him with the new corporal badge. Who's going to pin you tonight? Please.
Congratulations. So we have two more resolutions, but if, if everyone wants to go out into the auditorium, council will be with you in just a moment for a picture.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield?
Resolution R dash twenty-four dash eight dash one twenty-one. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and accept the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, NSEP budget, as requested, allocated by the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, with the approval of the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and zero cents for equipment and resource allocation reimbursements. Iso move.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. We just discussed this as a committee, the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor Piazza, will you do one twenty-two?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution dash, R dash twenty-four dash eight dash one twenty-two. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and approve the City of Groton to purchase cameras from Communications Plus LLC, eighty-four sale and turnpike, Norwich, Connecticut, for a total cost of thirty-five thousand, ninety dollars and zero cents, to be paid from the accepted fiscal year 2025 State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Nuclear Safety Emergency Planning Fund. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. This was just discussed as a committee, the whole. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, abstention, motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And we are adjourned. Councilors, thank you for coming out tonight. We'll adjourn from here, and then the councils that are in chamber will go out and get pictures with the newly promoted officers.
Recording stopped.
You pick.
All right. All right now.
Yep.
Getting your steps in.
I was really hoping to butcher his name. Also, I feel like his name isn't like so different. Huh?